Father, we ask you blessings as we come and to do this workshop. Father, we have blessed those who've come. Bless the several families that are represented, Father. And let us also be reminded of those who are sick and shut in and suffering various things, Father. Help us to understand that we are a brother's keeper. Take care of us as we go throughout this workshop session. Your son, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right. You want to go with River Street first? So we have two presentations tonight, two items. River Street is one with the broadband. And then we have emergency management.
So the agenda had River Street going first.
Yeah, River Street going first.
And I think they're here. Josh, can you hear us, Jody?
Yes, sir. How is everyone?
Good.
We're fine.
We're good.
Hear you loud and clear.
Thanks for having us. And Josh is going to take over the presentation. I'm asking everyone, Taylor, you and David. Wait for it. That's really what I'm trying to mark out.
Jody, Jody, we can hear you. We got all kinds of interference. It's like music, music in the background or something.
Not right here echoing too. I don't know if.
Make sure that you only have audio on either your phone or your computer because if you have both, it'll give you feedback. So just.
Yeah, I'm only on my computer. I'm, it seems like there's feedback coming from.
Your side as we're talking.
Yeah.
Is that, give me a thumbs up if that's better. Is that better? Okay. All right. All right. So that's, that's what it is, is just, I guess, the roar of the room. But I'll just start. I'll be really quick in saying this. As far as our experiences with public private partnerships, we've seen it across the board to where there's no county involvement at all, even if, if there has been funding put up, up front. And I can say that Taylor and David have done an outstanding job. And so that, that's just assigned to the efficacy of your leadership as a board of supervisors and, and help getting this project going. So this is one of those projects where we have to walk, then we jog, and then we run. It's a marathon. So we're getting this off the ground and Josh is going to go over all of this, where we are with you. And, and we welcome any questions. And I'm, I'm going to mute myself. Okay. Thank you all again for the opportunity. It's up to you, Josh, if you want to unmute.
Okay. Sorry about that. Just trying to figure out how to, how to navigate. Now I was having trouble hearing everyone. So can you hear me okay now? Everybody hear me? I see the thumbs up. Okay. Yeah, I was all connected in there good. And then the whole first part of everything everyone said was really, I couldn't hear it well. So I dropped off of the wifi I was on and reconnected to another one. So hopefully you can hear me just fine. First of all, we appreciate the opportunity and appreciate you, ladies and gentlemen, allowing us to update you on where we are thus far with the project. I did see Jennifer Jack jump in. She's with Flex. They have also been an integral part in us executing this project as well as what we're doing in Dinwiddie County and a number of other counties in our service area. To present myself, my name is Joshua Strickland. I'm the Wireless Operations Manager for River Street Networks. And I think Jody spoke just a moment ago. He's the CTO and I direct, I report directly to Jody. What we wanted to do is give you a couple of different views at what we've been working on so far. We're presently in Phase 1A. We broke the project up into three one-year phases, so a phase one through three. And then each phase, we break into an A and B, which is typically around six months. But in getting started and getting the first phase off the ground, they're going to be a little bit longer than six months. They're, they're a little more like seven months for the first two phases. And then we'll catch up as we go along in the second and third phase. This is just, this map is a little busy, but I will try to point out some high level items. The first high level item is we have essentially a head end with MBC here in Amelia Courthouse. That site, we will be installing equipment into, I believe, later this week or early next week. Our routing equipment that will face out toward the internet. And basically, we'll be doing a fiber backhaul from that location to the water tank at the IDC industrial facility that will enable us to wirelessly backhaul out into remote parts of the county. But we will also, where it makes sense, use fiber to backhaul as well. The other Phase 1A site is the main water tank in Amelia, which I'll go into a little more detail about that a little later. And then Phase 1A also includes the Featherstone site, which is, if you can see, my pointer is up here in the northern part of the county. I'm sure most of you are familiar with the Whittingtons. We met them first at one of your community meetings and then followed up with them, seeing that they had a really nice tall existing structure on their farm property. And that's an example of how we've been able to work with someone to be able to produce an elevated asset that we will essentially build fiber out to and we'll use that as a broadcast site for the folks in that part of the county without having to build a brand new vertical asset. As we move into Phase 1B, we're actually going to be building a brand new 200-foot or 190-foot tower on the Chan Smith property located near the volunteer fire department in Manboro. And that will be wirelessly backhauled with a gigabit license backhaul back to the water tanks and will be used not only to provide point-to-multi-point service in this portion of the county, but also to branch out to hit other parts of the county with wireless backhaul where fiber is not applicable. There'll be another Phase 1B site that we hope to be a co-location. Our initial plan was to utilize these grain silos that were located kind of midway between Amelia Courthouse and Manboro. That fell through negotiations. So we're actively looking for a potential of Phase 1B co-location on an existing site. We've got applications in with SBA to try to get some pricing from them because they do have a tower located here and a tower located here. As an alternate, we are thinking about doing a small cell deployment in this area where we have received a good number of service applications. So digging down a little further into the Phase 1A tanks detail, what we have completed so far is our agreement with MBC at their head end. And as I mentioned, we're going to be installing equipment either Friday or Monday there and an IRU for fiber and also a build out where they're extending their fiber to the, the GBC or IDA tank located here. We will use that tank to backhaul some sites, but primarily we will use it to put in a multi-gigabit licensed link over to the main Amelia tank. It was our initial plan to pull fiber straight to that tank, but we had some difficulty in getting utility easements at that site. So we decided just to pull it to this tank and then do gigabit backhaul. And then we'll have the ability to do further shots using fixed wireless out to remote parts of the county that you just, it just doesn't make sense to pull new fiber to. This link would be to Featherstone. You see the direction of that and how that's planned out. And this was to another site, but that's the one that fell through. Given a little bit of an outline of what I just discussed, our MBC upstream for Phase 1A is, and the fiber aspect is on track. The GBC and IDA tank, which is a relay site, it did have a late entry because that was not on the table initially until we determined that it was not feasible for us to get utilities easement into the main water tank. So that was a late entry. So that site will be a little bit delayed from the timelines you're going to see in one of the next slides. We will be working on the main tank site, which we consider a wireless hub site, which I just explained. That one as well is slightly delayed because of the easement issue we ran into. And then the Featherstone, Featherstone Farm site, it is on track. In fact, the agreement for that site is executed and I have another memorandum for that site in my hands. They'll be executed tomorrow. But we do have notice to proceed on construction for that site. And I believe that is a beginning this week. As far as the fiber aspect of Phase 1A, the fiber connecting the GBC IDA tank back to MBC, again, that was a late entry. It kind of came into the, into this phase of the project a little late, but it is actually on track. So that's, that's going well. And then the Featherstone Farm site, we'll be pulling fiber to that site to connect to the existing MBC network. And that is on track as well. Moving into the, to the net, next aspect of this phase, which is Phase 1B, with a completion date of quarter two of 2021, we'll be constructing a new tower in Manboro, which I mentioned was at the Smith property. So far completed with that is the preliminary agreement. I don't, Taylor may know if that agreement has been executed with the Smiths, but that's really between the county and the, and the landowner. But I think it was really close, if not already done. We've done the soil study there. We've done the skip package and preliminary RF at that site. And currently underway is the depot, which, and EPA, which are kind of environmental studies. And then because of its location and potentially on a civil war battleground, there will have to be an archaeological study before we can construct the tower at that site. So those are the aspects that are currently underway there before we can begin construction on an actual tower. Once that tower is constructed, we expect things to go pretty quickly and loading it with our wireless equipment. Normally that takes, the actual work takes less than a week, but getting everything primed and ready to go is about four to six weeks. And then we'll be broadcasting off of that site and backhauling it from the main tank in Amelia. As far as the, the second site in Phase 1B, that's the co-location that I mentioned. Our initial site, we got pretty far down the road and negotiations fell through on that site where the property owner and ourselves could not, there was just too much delta in our difference in what we saw on the site. So we're seeking estimates currently from existing cell sites, which I mentioned SBA, and also looking into the potential for alternate options for the second site in Phase 1B. This is a quick view of the status overview of the project. Twice a week, we meet specifically to go over this project and the Dinwiddie project. The first meeting that we have is an internal meeting with all of our internal stakeholders, our vendors and everyone involved and even some people that aren't involved with the project. Just kind of everyone staying on the same page and trying to address issues and move things forward. The second meeting is actually with the counties and Taylor's been participating in those. And we also have invited, if any of the board members want to listen in or participate in that meeting, you're welcome to do so as well. This is just shows kind of the, the spreadsheet that gives us an ad glance of where we are with everything. As you can see, across your Phase 1 site, discovery is completed on all sites except that co-location I mentioned. The zoning permits and approvals are done on our, all sites except the Manboro new tower construction, which, you know, just can't, it's just not there yet because it's a new tower construction. We did just today get back the soil study for that site and nothing was out of the ordinary. So that will move on just fine. We are actively working pretty heavily in the agreement and easements aspect of all of these sites. The agreements are already done with Featherstone, agreements done with MBC for our co-location at their head end. The county through the county's attorney has given us back these two agreements. And they're currently with our attorney reviewing on our side, everything. Actually, I got an email back from him. I've just, this afternoon, I just haven't reviewed it yet. But once I have that review, he'll be getting that back over to Jeff Gore. As far as the rest of the items, you can see most of these items are done, other than the main water tank where we're still planning on basically the site sketch and plans. The ones for GBC are already done. I mean, in fact, our construction crew was chomping at the bit to actually go out there and already start work. And I was trying to slow them down because we, we don't actually have a full notice to proceed at that site. Another item that's underway is basically installing our rack and, and some of our initial power supplies and things like that at the Amelia Featherstone site. That won't be necessary at the main water tank, as you can see, because you already have, you already have a, a building there for us. And that's, that's definitely a nice thing to have. Yeah. And so the rest of this, you know, is probably a little further out. But as you can see, the status, particularly in this area of what's done, what's underway and what's yet to be done, kind of in the wide areas are yet to be done. That gives you a good idea, kind of at a glance of what we're looking at. It was our initial plan to be, to be live on these, these three sites by September 30th, and that has been delayed. I suspect by the end of October, we're going to be okay on these sites. But we, I don't think we're going to make the 9:30 on these sites. A lot of it is just due to having a couple of false starts with the main tank in Amelia as well as, you know, just the timing and getting everything up and going, you know, out of the gate. I believe our, it's kind of a self-imposed time on the MBC co-location site. We'll have no issue taking care of that. That's planned for, as I mentioned, Friday or Monday. This is what everyone cares about, coverages. So for Phase 1, you're getting a little bleed over here from a Dinwiddie site. But for Phase 1, this is what we project as far as coverages. And this is again, an RF estimate. It does take into account tree data that's provided by the government as well as topology and topography. But essentially the proof is in the pudding and we have to kind of tweak this once we actually have equipment up and broadcasting, once we do our field testing. But this, according to our RF engineers, assuming a max height of 60 feet. So this would be in a case that someone that had a weak signal could potentially install a pole or small tower at their property or off of an existing barn or existing structure. This is the type of coverage you would expect at 60 feet. Of course, if you come down lower, you know, it's going to be a little thinner due to the trees. But essentially, we're looking at Featherstone up here in this area. This is the Smith site where we're building a new tower. And then these are the two water tanks. Once we get all these completed, then we'll look at branching out into some other areas. And what we don't have on this site is that second Phase 1B colo site that may appear somewhere up in here. Or if we do one of the SBA sites, may appear somewhere down in this, or down in this area to fill in this part of the county. See here. Another thing I wanted to mention is our, our demand aggregation portal. It's at join dot build riverstreet.com. As many folks that can go and fill this out that are not happy with their current internet service, that would definitely be helpful for us. We did have some figures back and if anyone's interested in the details of those, of, of the actual numbers of surveys we've gotten, but we're pretty far from our target. I believe our target was like 30% of the households. Do you recall, Jody, if that was 30% or 20%? 30%? Shaking his head, yes?
30%. Yes.
Yeah. If anyone's interested in seeing that data privately, or I could share it with Taylor on the numbers, but the responses we've gotten in Amelia haven't been quite as good as Dinwiddie. It's, the map is just very scattered. The only place that we have real concentrations of demand, let's see if this thing will let me go backwards.
Josh, the number that I think applies to us every week or two, right?
I get an update on those once a month.
Okay. It's month, that is right. It's monthly. Are those passed on to, I think Taylor and Kevin are talking on those as well, right? Tammy?
I'm not sure. I don't recall.
I'll look and see.
Yeah. But, you know, really, you know, this area, we've seen some concentrations, you know, we, this, actually, these dots are not the most recent. This is an old dataset that's on this map. But we haven't seen, you know, a lot of concentrations, definitely in the Manboro area, there are some concentrations. Definitely in the most populated parts of the county, there's a little concentration. But a lot of it is very spread out like we're seeing on this map. And with that, that's essentially all the slides I have and we can open it up to questions and Jody and I can try to, try to answer them or get answers.
Josh, I'll share my screen real quick. I'll, I'll share what is sent to Taylor and, and the other individuals with the counties. I'll share that in just a second. It's just a slide. Let's see. So let me actually, let me download this and open it. All right. Is everybody able to see that? Thumbs up? You can see, yeah. I have to go back to where I was. So as you see here, this is a report that is provided once a month, as Josh stated. And I mean, the, it shows the, the total addresses, how many are residential. It shows what are, it's, so it's 40% to goal. But it shows the leads that we've had. We've had 283 in Amelia. We've had 1,055. And so to meet our 40% goal, that number would be 1,580. And what that, what that means goal, as far as whenever we look at building in an area, if we can hit 30 to 40% of the locations we pass or that we're able to serve, we consider that a, that's almost like our break even usually is 30%. So that's what we aim for. That doesn't mean that the project doesn't keep going. It's just, it's our internal way of keeping up with the number that, of what we strive for. 40% I feel is very aggressive. I think 30 is probably more realistic, but you would know better than anyone else as far as in the area you are and how deprived you are with broadband on, on what that number could be. So.
Can we, I have a question about that. Sorry, this is Joseph Easter from the board. I think there's extremely minimal advertising and awareness about that survey. And the first few times it was distributed, the link, I remember, was actually wrong and people were going to a dead website. Whose responsibility is it to get that advertising and awareness of the link out there? Because I see actually nothing happening for that. The numbers you have are not surprising.
That's, that's on us totally to do. That's an internal switch that we need to work on with, with our marketing group. So we, we take total responsibility for that and correcting that. So that's on us to do. Do you, in your, in your opinion, as far as, do you think that we should send mailers to individuals, hang door hangers? Or what do you think the best way would do? I'm sorry about.
All the above.
Yeah. Combination there.
All right. I mean, add the newspaper would be a good, would be a good start too. Give, you know, give us as board members something to share on social media. You know, anything would be better than, I literally think nothing's being done right now. So I appreciate you taking ownership of that.
Oh, absolutely.
Since, since already interrupted the question, I'll say, I'd like to take you up on your offer to get invites to the weekly status meetings. I think one of the, this is a great presentation today and giving us a lot better information. But one of the reasons we definitely asked for you to join today is the board is getting almost no information. So I don't know if you're sending it and it's not getting passed along or it's supposed to come directly from you, but we get almost nothing as far as updates go. So I know we're very eager for information because contrary to the survey results, our citizens are dying for the service and are pinging us appropriately often about the status.
Yeah, that would be consistent with what we hear too, because we, Josh and I probably get two or three voicemails per week or emails.
I'm sure.
Into our Wilkes-Emfo. So yeah, the numbers are definitely not reflective of what that, that true need is. So there will be, there will be several things we can do. And, and I'll take that back as a, as an action item. Local newspaper ads, our social media, we have a marketing department that can take care of that to tar, to target. And who, with whom should we work? Taylor, is that with, with you that we should find out?
Are you the project, are you on the list as the project manager or is it David? We had a question about that at the last board meeting. It's who our project manager is because I think the contract requires we have one.
I get most of the contacts.
Okay.
It does. And I think Tyler is in Dinwiddie County. So yeah, that's definitely something we will do. And, and also if there's radio ads, I'm not sure if, if you think radio would help, but any way to, to try to reach.
They work it out.
What do you?
We probably.
We don't really have a local, local radio in Amelia.
All right.
Legally, is the county able to release that link in any of the newsletters or communication that county is already sending out?
Yeah. So for, for example, we, we just, we're sending out all of our tax bills within the next week, so it's too late now. But we put inserts in tax bills and other things that we wanted people to be aware of. If the marketing team starts working with the county, like we can explore a lot of options. That's one that's unfortunately passed us by now, but.
Water still be on.
Yeah. I agree. They're in the court.
Social media, if you can get us something to post.
Yeah. So what, what about this? What about also at the, I don't know how you feel about mixing this, but during election day, is there any possibility for us to provide collateral that could be at the polling stations? Or do you think that'd just be mixing, you know, mixing too much? I mean, you guys can think about that and you can let us know.
It's a while. I don't, I don't mind it being mixed as much as I think it just, it'd probably be lost in the, the other things. I'm not sure that'd be your best.
Okay.
I think the ones we've mentioned would be a good start.
Okay. We will take that back and we'll definitely do some, we'll make that work. Okay?
Thanks.
Yeah. And as far as, we'll, we'll, Taylor can convey the.
Yes.
For the, for the conference calls.
Would have been next time.
Jody, I was having trouble hearing you. Can you repeat that?
Well, I, I was, and sorry, I'll, I'll mute right after this, but, um, not while I'm talking, but it, it's up to you, I guess, to work with Taylor to get a list of the attendees who need to be on those weekly scheduled conference calls.
Yeah. Now, Taylor, if you could just share that link, I, I know we had shared it and your chairman joined two weeks ago. You're welcome to share that link with members of the board. And if you want to just listen in or even participate, what we did is we split up 30 minutes for Dinwiddie and 30 minutes for Amelia. It's, it's a one hour meeting and normally Taylor joins at the second half. But, you know, we would, we would welcome for folks to listen because I think transparency and being aware of, of the accomplishments we've made, how far we've came, but as well as the challenges we face, because you probably would have some good, good advice to give us with some, some of these items as well, I can imagine.
Well, I think that's my, that's my other observation as it went through is it's, I appreciate the transparency about the challenges. It's very disappointing to hear about the challenges. They don't seem to, the two primary ones that you mentioned don't seem to be directly within your control. For the negotiation falling through for the other location, I don't know the, the citizens' names don't want to know. But I think this is so in demand by the citizens, I would encourage any citizen in Amelia to, you know, actively work to try to get this and understand it's in the community's best interest. So I'm very disappointed to hear someone couldn't follow through with that negotiation. And I'd like you to share more information about, for the main water tower, what are the easement issues that you ran into there?
I will give kind of, because I, I'm sure there's more detail than even I know, but I will give my point of view and kind of the high level view is that we wanted to bring fiber into that water tank and we've realized. Uh, and we've realized after a little work and doing the title searches and doing all the, you know, kind of legal background searches that have to happen when we're going to make an investment for fiber uh, onto a site. That, that, that tank doesn't sit on property that the county owns. And the lawyers looked at the legal aspect of that. The easement that the county has was not the type of easement that would extend to us as an internet service provider. Uh, we worked with the land through uh, Taylor and Taylor could probably give you the details of what transpired um, from there. But it ended up that we just were not able to get anything new uh, added for an easement. So basically we could, we could essentially use the tank, but we couldn't pull any utilities in the tank. So that's where the G B C I D A tank came into play as kind of um, it's going to take some, it took some costs, some new costs we didn't expect, but us some time, we didn't expect to add that in the last minute. Uh, because it wasn't part of the plan in order to get connectivity over to the water tank using uh, multi gigabit uh, fixed wireless backhauling. Um, because that main tank is a really good uh, site. It, it sits high. It's a sturdy big structure. So as we start rural parts of the county, we can put uh, wireless backhauls on that tank, cause it already even has the halo and everything up there. So it's, it's a real asset. Um, so it makes a lot of sense to use in the project. Uh, but again, unfortunately we were not able to obtain the easements to pull our own fiber in there. And Taylor probably knows more about the details of the negotiation. So.
I don't personally need more details, but what I, what I hear, it's very disappointing then is challenges dealing with two Amelia landowners have ca, led to delays in the project and additional costs. And that's just disappointing for all the other citizens in Amelia. Thanks for sharing that.
Well, let, let me do, uh, let me express though, that um, we've got some wins too. The folks.
I agree. I, I agree. Definitely demonstrated some positive ones. Yes.
Yeah. Excellent. And um, and uh, the Smith family has been excellent to work with. So.
We thank those families.
So you're saying if you could get access to the big blue water tower for utilities, you wouldn't need the G B C tower at all?
That is correct.
Just seems redundant.
Well, what we need was a place to bring our fiber into that was a nice asset to be able to feed that site. It's, it's going to be a wireless hub.
So I originally heard that the reason you couldn't get that a tower, the big tower was because of railroads.
That's the Taylors, that's what Taylor's saying now too.
The, that was the initial hurdle, but you know, the, the railroad, they own the property from here to the other end of the twenty-eight thousand miles through the earth. And I'm, I'm sorry about that. Um, I'm, I'm sure it's. So we would have had to have gotten uh, a lot of the um, railroad, as would M B C as well. And, and so if we did not apply for those at the exact same time, even if we had, those, those could be thirty, forty-five days apart from when they're executed because the railroad, I mean, they, they take their time and, and granting that because they're, they're very um, very calculated in how they, how they look at it. And I understand why they are. They were looking. And perhaps I misunderstood that, you know, the railroad was the bigger of the, of the, of the issues. But certainly getting fiber utilities into that site was going to be, take more time um, and be more difficult than going.
Yeah, initially we, we thought the railroad was the, the, the major hurdle. And then it, it turned out afterward that this uh, I'm not going to say it's an inability to get to the tower, but to be able to come to an agreement as far as what that cost should be, we, we can't be charged like a, like a um, a commercial carrier like a T-Mobile or Verizon. And, and there just isn't a business case. And when, when you look at that, so we had to abandon it, but we were lucky that.
It's great. Is it the railroad or is it the property owner?
We talk back.
So we, we were lucky that we were able to identify the G B C tank. And the, the benefit of that is, is it's in closer proximity to the Amelia M B C hut. So these things have a way of just working out and it did, it did add a delay, but it's going to work out in the end.
Further questions? Does anybody in the audience have a question? Okay. We appreciate you accommodating us this afternoon. And uh, as I said, when I sat in on last week's, uh, it was pretty much very informative, brought me up to date. It was almost like identical presentation that I had. That was a good. We appreciate that.
Oh, that's good.
You, you, oh.
We certainly appreciate your time again and your understanding in this. And, and like I said, it's.
Apparently.
More than two board members would, we, we'll, we'll stagger meeting. That, that's not a problem.
We can't have more than two board members on a Zoom meeting?
Oh.
That's not public.
Right. So what we, we, we'll deal with that. Not a problem.
But yeah, we're, we're still in the walking phase right now. We'll be jogging when we hit, hit phase one B. So we appreciate the patience with that.
Yeah.
We have some things to work on and we'll coordinate with Taylor on those. But any of you, if you need to get in touch with me directly, there has my email address. I know I've passed out so much respect. Needs to get in touch with me. Um, my email address is jodycall@myriverstreet.net. Okay? So.
You, you have any rough dates on um, phase two?
Josh?
Yeah, um, I would say quarter four of this year into the winter, going into the new year, we'll be putting together the actual plans uh, for that site, because it's actually in our contract that we have to define the phases um, at the beginning. Um, so we will be putting that together and we'll be presenting that to both counties. Um, it's my expectation, well, I wanted to mention a couple of, a couple of things related to that. Uh, the first thing is, is that uh, nearly all the equipment has been ordered and is on hand for uh, our phase one A. And a good bit of the phase one B equipment has already been ordered and is, and uh, is on hand, but not as much as phase one A. Um, the other uh, thing there is I would expect uh, definitely in quarter four of twenty twenty to be able to start signing people up. Um, you know, it's going to be hard to tell exact, exact date, because you do run into things you don't expect. But we will um, you know, start uh, moving these pretty quickly here in the next month. Uh, it's just been, you know, a lot of work doing all of the surveys that had to occur and getting the agreements and easements, all those kind of things in place. Uh, as well as coordinating uh, electricity at some sites and that kind of thing, just, you know, get started. So uh, once we, once we get that going, um, I think you'll see a lot of progress that we can see. Um, but until then, you know, uh, having somebody from your board join our weekly meeting would be very welcome uh, on my end.
So let me ask the question a different way. When do you anticipate service being given to the western part of the county?
Uh, that would, western meaning west of Amelia Courthouse.
Yeah, Genesville, Pennville.
Yeah, a lot of that is phase three. Um, and I would just refer to the, the C P I document and the timeline for that, but phase three would be two years out. Uh, that doesn't mean that we may not find some sites that make sense and we slide into phase two. Um, you know, that's all still very fluid and a lot of that is directed by where we get the most surveys from. So when we see concentrations of people, um, it's my job to start looking and trying to figure out how we get those concentrations of, of household service.
We just need to know what to tell people.
And what, what kind of timeline do you expect as far as, like if, if you have two hundred and eighty-three houses signed up now, uh, backlog? When you start hooking people up, how many people can get online a week, a day? I mean, is there any anticipation of that or will it take months to get two hundred houses hooked up?
Typically, um, that's going to be based on the number of crews we have in the area. We can scale number of crews based on demand. And we can also bring on contractors to do the work, but typical installer will do two to three installs per day. Um, and if, you know, typically what we like to do is try to have the same installer in the same community or neighborhood doing installs in the same week, all in that same area, um, if at all possible. Um, but re, really, I mean, you know, it, normally the problem isn't that we would have a waiting list of people ready to get service. Um, that's normally not, not the big issue on our end. Uh, it's just, you know, a lot of people, even though they say they're interested in service, it's been my experience that some, some of them are slow to adopt as well. They want to see how it goes for their neighbors. Uh, they want, you know, that kind of thing. So I think it will be a ramping up period over six months or so at each of the sites, where we'll see a trickle of people come in and then as they're, you know, a lot of people have Q's net that, you know, they're in contracts with and that kind of thing. Typically, uh, the weak link is not a backlog of people waiting for service installations. We, we normally don't have that problem with fixed wireless. Um, we can, we can get those done pretty quick.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Take care.
Thanks again for your time. Have a good night, everyone.
If you have anything you want to add to.
Where's Jennifer Jack?
She's the lady that is the engineer technical working on the plans and specs for just that one tower in Manboro.
Oh, wow. That's the one right there.
Near the fire.
Near the fire.
That's her company that does that.
All right. Uh, any other comments before we go to uh, establishes? Okay. Emergency management.
Mr. Emerson.
If you'd like me to.
Please.
All right.
The presentation is on the, on the desktop. Yes. The PDF. I mean, no, the uh,
No, not.
PowerPoint.
PowerPoint.
Thanks, Jeff.
As you all know, this.
Back to web, can you go back to WebEx and share it so that when the recording is out, they can see the slides with it? Does that make sense?
I don't know how to do all of that.
So, yeah, now share. That, yeah. That way, when it records.
That's what we want.
Yeah.
For sure.
That's technology.
As you all know, this all grew out of your work session in June, I believe. We wanted emergency services to come up with a plan for the future, for the next several years. And we started working on that. The, the idea was we were shooting for the end of the year. And so what you have seen, what I shared with you all last week is a draft. I change it based on feedback that I get all the time. And I'll go through with you right now where it stands right now. If you go to the next page. It just, I think you all should have all seen it. It starts off with just a, a statement of the purpose of what you all were looking for, or at least what I took you all to be looking for. A brief history of the agencies as it relates to this project. We had to make some planning assumptions there included in there. And then we discussed the methodology of how we're going about developing this. And then we moved into the phases of how we envisioned this could go forward. Phase one is pretty much feedback that I received from the, the fire department. I haven't got any feedback from the emergency squad yet about this, but this is some things that the fire department felt like they could use right now. And that's the phase one. Phase two is strictly a contingency plan. And it's designed if something catastrophic would happen specifically to the emergency squad, similar to what has happened in some of our neighboring counties. Again, it is strictly a contingency. It may never be used. Hopefully it will never be used, but it's there as a plan to give us something to go back to should something catastrophic happen. Phase three fills on the initial staff that the fire department felt that they could use right now. It fills out things like training and some of the other aspects that could be of tremendous use in the future. Again, this is a, a shot in the dark for, for what may happen, but many of our local, our, our neighboring localities have stayed in what we're calling the phase three. They've stayed there for twenty years. If they're able to provide logistical and administrative support to the volunteers, the volunteers handle the operational day-to-day aspects of things. And when I say administrative and logistical, I'm referring to helping with submitting reports that are required, getting ready for inspections, uh, making purchases, uh, inventorying, all those type things that are not a big interest to the volunteers in some of the areas that they typically struggle in, in doing. I envision phase three to last sometime. Phase four ties directly back to phase two. Again, it's a contingency and it is a, in a a furthering of what was going on in phase two. But again, that's a contingency. Hopefully that'll never happen. But again, it's a plan should the worst happen. And then finally, phase five is the, the last, and that would be at the point where the volunteers felt that they were not able to adequately ser, provide the service to the county. And that would be the, the true hiring of operational staff. And again, we anticipate that it's going to be years down the road. We hope that's going to be years down the road. But this is the plan. Then there were some key areas that we wanted to bring up to make sure everybody was aware of. And the first one being, we want to support the volunteers that are out there right now. Whatever we can do to help maintain their ability to provide the service is going to be better for our community as a whole. At the point where we start to have to hire staff at whatever point that is in the future, it is critical that we pay attention to the integration of volunteers and with the paid staff. That's key in every jurisdiction that's been through this process. As part of that, personnel policies, policies are going to have to be developed that in, that take into account both volunteers as well as staff. And again, administrative support is going to have to be there to take care of the folks as well. Then we specifically talk a little bit about revenue recovery and how some of this funding could be paid for other than tax money. And then we also mentioned some grant opportunities that are out there to start down the process should we ever need to. And then we finish up by talking about some of the folks that we've talked to. And we've talked to many of our neighbors that have gone through this process. We've talked to a number of local volunteers. And that's where it stands right now. Again, it's a draft, it's a work in progress. This is where it, what it is right now. I've already got feedback from two other counties that have not been incorporated into this yet. And we can see this process continuing. I've spoken with the fire department. They've given feedback. I think the fire department as a whole has accepted and agree with what's, what's in here. And I think the emergency squad is still evaluating it. I haven't got any feedback from the squad. I'm hoping that they will provide some. And that's where it stands right now. If, if, I think the last slide, there are some appendices in there that could just give you some background information. Um, again, salaries, uniforms, um, some, the volunteer firefighters and rescue squad service, it's basically a, a retirement program for volunteers. Uh, appendix four is considerations for a potential high school program that's been looked at in the past. It's just been brought up to be potentially looked at maybe a little more seriously now. And again, that would obviously have to involve the schools and we haven't initiated any contact with them about this yet. And then appendix five is just a rehash of the the uh, irony in that study that the state did for us back in April of two thousand and twelve. And specifically the appendix five goes through every recommendation that they made and whether or not this new framework for the future will address that particular recommendation. So that's what we have right now. Senor's court. Senor's court.
Question from board members or observations or comments?
In the short term, the key area is a concern. The first one you have is supporting the volunteer efforts. What does that mean? What can we do now for that now?
Generally speaking, providing for them and I'll let them speak for themselves. Providing the administrative and potential logistical support, things that the volunteers historically have had a hard time doing themselves.
I saw in the draft report, it also mentioned potential incentives and things like that too, which I thought retention, as well as advertising. I think those are very valuable benefits for us to, to consider. That would be easy for the county to to provide some ways.
That from our side, that the, the two things that we could really use right away and something that could help us now in the future is number one, which wasn't really addressed during that study in 2008, is our communication system. That communications would help the sheriff's office, the squad and us that try to talk to each other through the county. It is difficult at best and something getting worse out there. That we really need, that's something that has to be addressed.
Is there, is there nothing being done for that right now? Is there nothing being worked on for that right now?
Not to my knowledge. There was, it was brought up in 2008, I believe cost, they looked at cost.
So all this work the sheriff's office is doing for communications doesn't help you at all?
No.
You can't tie into that in any way?
That's my knowledge. And I'm by far no expert in communication, but I'm looking at the basics. And when I pick up my handheld, I can even talk to dispatch at times.
And we have a lot of desert.
We have trouble with background static and one side can't hear the other.
Yeah. So do you?
Or can't understand what the other one's saying.
Does anyone understand what the solution to that is right now?
I mean, there's opportunities out there. I don't know about Virginia system, stuff like that. There are, there are the recruiter system and stuff like that, but the bottom line of all of it's going to be the cost factor of putting it in place. So, I mean, the majority, the resolution to the problem is, is money. Now, I mean, I wouldn't say that in a bad way, but that's
Yeah, of course. That's fine to be open.
I don't recall, the, the challenge is like, I don't recall any of that being listed in the CIP. So like, that seems like a very good use of CIP funds. Now granted, they're on hold right now because of COVID, so it wouldn't be an immediate solution. But does anybody else, I don't, if, I don't think they're in the list either. They need to at least be in the list or we can't, we can't prioritize funding for something that's not in the, not in the inventory.
It's, it's a ongoing problem.
Okay, that's, that's fair, but can somebody take point on at least, and I get that it's going to change over time. Like that's the nature of all technology around here, but can somebody take point on putting together a request to put into the CIP process? Cause actually David is about to start updates on that. And so it's, he mentioned
where it is now, but for the first several years that I worked for the county, there was a multimillion dollar project for that. Again, it may not be in there now.
Well, I for one would like to understand it. What's, what's needed, what's involved and what's it going to cost? So we can
Can we ask you, can we ask you to take points on following up with David on it? Not necessarily to do it, but we just, I think it'd be helpful to walk away with somebody on point. And if anyone else wants to volunteer for it, that's fine too.
Certainly I, I would be happy to do that. We do not in our county in respect to everybody that's here, we do not have a radio expert here. I, I heard mention of in the past, the idea of a consultant being used. That would be in my humble opinion, an excellent point for a consultant to come in.
So that's, I, that's a great point. And we even, we have in the CIP requests now several ones like that where they said, you know, we need a consultant to study a new animal shelter, a consultant to study a new library, just as examples. That would be a great first start is to put in a CIP request for the funds for that study or consultant. I think you're hearing tremendous openness to that. It's just, we've got to have something to act, to act on. So that'd be great.
We'll make sure that it's in there for the next iteration.
And oh, by the way, we have a program going on right now to put towers all over the county. So
They told us we are working with
But just so you know, right now, every radio in the county talks back to the tower. We'll cheat a roof, no matter where it is.
And it has failed. Yeah. A couple of times. Great. So we asked for what can we get you to help? Great example there.
The other thing to mention, the capital improvement project is that there's 25, I think it's $25,000 in there to get sites studying on a training facility.
Yes.
My deserves and fire department. And that would help us in a long way if we can proceed on getting training for the alley. At the central location where I can get all five fire companies trained as one. Get the squad involved with that. And even the sheriff's department, we could develop a whole little training site. I know it's on hold right now, but that's something that could also help us in the short term.
I think, I think a training facility would help with our recruitment and especially retention. Because if, if you can go right up the street and fight fake fire versus waiting for a fire to happen, I mean, it's, you know, I mean, the, the benefits from it. And if we could build something to incorporate the sheriff's office too, you know, I mean,
Yeah. Retrospective, that's why I also put in a big training building there where you share the fire sheriff department. And all the possible schools or anything into that system to train there so that
Right. That's a good, that's a good reminder that I do remember that one being in CIP, which again, granted they're on hold until we see what the funds look like. We're revisiting all CIP in December after we have a view into what the collections look like is our current plan, just in awareness.
I was talking on the side to Kent, asking about the 911 fees that we pay with our telephone bill. Number one, I have no clue what kind of funds are there. But could that be a source of money for communication system? Does that seem like it's a vital, communication is vital to 911 services?
I don't think you have anybody in the room is familiar enough with those funds where they go. I think we'll have to have to follow up, but we'll make a note of that. So I've had nine months. You can, if you can only imagine how much you've had to learn in nine months.
Because I do financials for 10 no such thing. I guess I would expect
I'm not saying that's a wrong expectation. I'm admitting I don't know, but we know who to ask. So that's the key.
The only other thing I'd like to reemphasize is what Kent mentioned about the admin side of the fire department. Most of the ones I talk to on the fire side, they're there. They want to go put the wet stuff on the hot stuff, go home. Don't want to distribute the paperwork. Meating supply and all this stuff. So by taking that
Isn't that what Ron is for?
Excuse me?
Isn't that what Ron is for? Just kidding.
I think you got it done already.
We can get that taken off the plate where they can concentrate on the monitoring aspect of it. People have had a trouble for this.
Before you move on, I just unless it has been removed, the capital improvement project list did include a certain amount of money that would allow us to put the equipment on the new tower in Manboro or wherever. But the new one is, it seems like the newest one is coming to Manboro. That would be, that's why it was in there so that we could have money if the opportunity presented itself. And it looks like, I agree, the opportunity is going to present itself in Manboro soon. So if that money is still in the budget, that would, that's not going to solve the problem, but that will be a help.
Just to clarify, it's not in the budget because all of them are put on hold. It's probably in the list. That is likely in the list, but just set everyone's expectations continually about money.
What about building the GIS network and how, how, there, there's a layer available for emergency services, right? I mean, is that something that's viable or that should be looked into?
GIS as a whole needs to be looked into and we need to spend more time on that. Emergency services would be a big user of it, but it should be driven.
They have so much capabilities that we don't use.
Yes. Then emergency services would be a huge user of that. The GIS and this piece is, is already in effect because it has to be. But the Kenneth Llewellyn is, works with the sheriff's office on a routine basis to maintain address layers and things like that that tie directly into the next generation 911 that Amiri County is being forced to move towards. It's and the reason it's being forced is because the, the current 911 technology is based on copper equipment just doesn't exist anymore. So the industry as a whole has got to go to RP. But that piece is currently being worked, but it needs to be integrated into a overall.
But this training, this training facility is separate from all communications, right? It's something we need. Something we need separately.
Reyna, were you raising your hand back there? All right. I just didn't want to ignore you in the back in the dark.
I have a question or concern about phase two. I'm sorry to introduce myself. My name is Ron Price. I'm the emergency squad.
Thank you.
So one of the concerns were that unfortunately, unfortunately we have to allow the county more for support for the squad to maintain services and stuff like that. And one of the concerns was unfortunately that falls into the board's annual budget and stuff, whether we receive them or not. I think one of the concerns was that would that support continue or would that support be used to push us to a point where we would have to give up the rescue squad?
Well, I'll happy to start with a comment on that one because it's very similar to we back up and, and so number one, thanks for all the volunteers that are here as well as throughout the county. We're happy to have a volunteer firefighter on, on the board as well. Have high respect for all the volunteers in both fire and EMS. There is no plan, no, there's been no discussion about a desire to push any of the volunteer organizations out. Very frankly, at minimum, it's not in the financial best interest of the county. We get tremendous financial benefit through the volunteer network. And all of us are pledged to spend the minimal amount of money the county has in the most efficient way possible. What we're trying to do is prevent ourselves from being in a situation that several of our neighboring counties, as well as counties throughout the country have found themselves in, is that almost overnight, they don't have a choice but to take over what had been provided by volunteer services. And if we just look at Buckingham, I can't remember the exact numbers, but I mean, it's multimillion dollars now extra per year that county is looking to, to, to fund. And none of us frankly want that. So we would like to get ahead of it, which is why the, the phase one is actually so important, which is how do we provide support to the volunteers? Like we would like to see each one of those phases continue as long as possible. But I think also understanding that there is some point in the future, and I'd love it to be 50 years down the road and I don't have to be wanting to work with it, but that the county will grow enough, the demographics will change enough, the nature of volunteering and the requirements on the volunteers will change enough that your minimum going to have to add paid staff. And we've already seen that, you know, in the, in the EMS space. And so we're just trying to, we're just trying to plan. My point I started on was I went and spoke to the fire chiefs meeting last week, I guess about two weeks ago, two weeks ago. That was a question they had. I was happy to say the exact same thing, I think that I said here. And you'll keep, you'll keep me honest on that. And I absolutely mean that. And I can't speak for anybody else myself, but I can say that's consistent with all of our conversations that, that we've had.
I appreciate that. And like I said, it's just one of those questions that we're asked.
It's a valid, it's a valid question.
And I think as far as what they were talking about for training and stuff like that. So like when we get someone that comes new to our squad and they are, they have to get EMP training and everything like that to be, to help enroll them. And they can volunteer as a driver. But to make them more proficient for the community, the EMP certification or something like that. So one of the things was trying to figure out a way to offset that cost. I was, okay, I want you to volunteer for me, but hey, now you gotta pay to go to school. So you get your certification. So you can come back and volunteer for us. And you know, this is, like I said, that's a way of supporting the volunteers or new volunteers who want to come on board is figuring out how to financially support them in their decision to be a volunteer rescue squad or the fire department.
Yeah. Well, I know the general county hasn't seen the full report yet because it's draft, as, as Kent said, and not finished, but when I walked away after reading it, one of my main questions was like, so I totally agree with the section on support and I, and incentives particularly for the volunteers, but it's still fairly open-ended in the report about what those incentives would be. And I'm going to admit, my time is volunteering basically in this capacity, not in EMS and fire. I don't know what the best incentives would be. It would be really helpful if, and they can be separate, like it can be whatever works for each group, but you know, fire could say, these are incentives that would directly help our volunteer base and EMS can say, these are incentives. I'm using that word very generally also because you tell us what it takes. It's not necessarily all financial. But the main financial benefit we provide EMS and fire volunteers now, I think are around their, like an property, property tax break. I think it's pretty minimal to be honest. I'm not sure that it's really a big motivating factor. Like let's look at something that actually helps and, and works for people. Again, it's any of those things are going to be cheaper than taking over or supplementing by millions of dollars. And so like, if it can help extend this, the phase one, it's better for all of us.
We've had a number of members. It's like, okay, you come in, it's like, how do I get trained? It's like, we have the classes here. You're going to have to go to Richmond or you're going to have to go to the RICO or J Sergeant Reynolds. Incorporate that into a, you know, degree program if, if you want to. And I've had a number of people tell me, well, if I can't get the classes locally, I'm not going into Zale. But to have a class here, the last class we had, it cost us $10,000. I think we got one member.
That's before my time.
Yeah. I look around and it's, you know, the kind of people that they're Yeah, I think it was you, but and yeah, we glad to have her. She's, she runs regular, you know, we can count on her for any night.
That's what's budgeted, that's what we're expecting to collect.
Classes so that fire department can become close trained. I don't think many of them are really interested in it because they don't like the paperwork. But well,
Appreciate that. I just
Yeah, we don't like it either.
Just you jump above us here, fireman. We, the training we go through is a good 150, 160 hours. Now to ask a volunteer to take those hours on plus tell EMTB how much is
120.
120 hours. Plus they have to keep their research on that. That's asking a lot of one individual to cover both bases. That's why in the report that I, the fire department is saying that that's one of the main reasons why we didn't want to get involved with it's, I don't want to put on one person 200 and something hours of training plus then expect them to run calls and do the paperwork and everything else. And that's why we brought up about the school classes, either tech center or the high school. Prince George teaches it. Prince George teaches it in their high schools, Our Tan teaches it in their high schools. And to make it part of the curriculum, offer both fire and EMS and part of their curriculum, and again, this is just, there's no details yet before. But looking at, okay, if you take EMS in high school or the tech center, they're required to run or spend time with the squad or if you take in fire, their closest companies. The requirement is to spend time with them.
Is there any minimum, is there any minimum age before people, not to take the, I, I guess you can take the class, but actually. 16 for fire, 18 for EMS?
18.
18 for EMS.
And that's where I mentioned the tech center because that's normally people out of just graduate from high school that's really don't want to go to a four year university and can't afford it. That's a promising career.
Yeah, I get you on the training. I'll be very honest, my wife's a registered nurse. It would be very easy for her to do the training. She's quite capable and the time commitment, not just for the original, but for the recertifications, et cetera, what make it daunting for her as well. And I think Kent captured that nicely in the report. I think it's a really good, a good reason why nationwide the volunteer numbers come down so much over the last decade.
That's why I'm not a EMG.
I taught it.
I mean, that's the only reason, because all the time you gotta put into it.
Yeah. I'm sure they have to get along.
I'd be happy to have a fireman behind the wheel. Take, take, which you probably already have, take EVAC. And some of the, the EVAC will usually crosses over that you don't have to take the EVAC like we take.
Right.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I'd be, I'd be happy to have a fireman behind, behind the wheel to free up my furlongs and he can be in the back with me. And my lifting days are over, so I have to have a third person on the crew to lift for me. And the fireman could do that.
Not sure how good it will, just don't have any idea. Yeah, that, yeah, yeah. I get some time just to talk. Kent, so. Sorry, I guess two questions. So emergency squad representatives, what, what general timeline do you think you'll be able to give Kent feedback on the report? And then the broader question I'm looking at is, when do you think the report is shareable enough, not final, but shareable enough that we can put it out for citizen, general citizens to look at, to ask questions or provide feedback before making it final, final? I know, but I like not to just do without asking. I have a copy, I could send it out now, but I don't want to do that. So EM, like what?
If they report it, the, the missing piece right now from my point of view is truly what the squad wants.
Well, that's why I wouldn't want to share it before they felt comfortable.
That to me, I think it would be in a position that it could be shared.
Towards the end of the month, I've got.
We're working on our EMS inspection.
Sure, that's why we're just asking.
Busy couple months. I would say.
I, I'm just looking for a target. That's why, we're not, we're not trying to nail you down to a promise, just a general. Yeah, it just gives us an expectation.
To membership and everything else too.
We're not going to do anything with that.
So what are, what are the reasons for the, for the need of the extra crews in EMS? I mean, is, is it volunteers are going down or is it call volumes going up, demands going up? I know the answer, but.
Yeah, I don't know.
And the number of volunteers has gone down or they're staying right where they are. And we're fixing to lose some, some providers because they've just done it. You know, Marvin's done it for 50 years. It's really literally has run shifts, run extra calls and really everything for 50 years.
And, you know, I used to run, and Jean and I used to always be that high, high person. So numbers on calls run year after year. Well, his back is shot and mine's not doing so good either. It's just, you know, life.
And it's like you said, it's, it's the expense involved. Come volunteer. I mean, you used to volunteer because it was something you did with your free time and it was beneficial. And now it's, yeah, come volunteer for me, but spend $2,000 so you can.
That, these are, these are the things that we need to, we need to do better, I guess firefighters and EMS, that we need to tell the county because after becoming on the board, and you know, I'm seeing both sides. People's complaint is the population's not going up. Why do you need more people? Why do you, why do we need to pay more? And I mean, I, that's why I ask, because you, we know volunteerism is going downhill. It, it has been, I mean, it's a national problem. It's, and then entitlement apparently is going up, so call volume goes up. So, but they're looking at the population and saying, wait, you have the same numbers you had 10 years ago. Why is it more? Well, it's.
And the thing is, it's because of, blame it on TV shows, but they pushed years and years and years now nine one one and the fire department. And everything will come. And now they're trying to, the medical side of it, you know, it's time to back off of it, you can't.
Yeah, you can't.
And the expectation, when you take that expectation away from them, they jump and holler and scream.
Yeah.
And I understand, you know, for both sides, you pay taxes for certain things and then you say, well, they need money again for this and that. Well, the county's giving them money. But you know, it's, it's not really how much.
We do have a call volume data and I just will add that to the report in one of the appendices.
Oh yeah, that would be nice.
Yeah, I took the.
Backlog.
I'm working on Grant right now and I took his numbers of calls, Trent calls paged out and compared them for the same period for, from numbers from the billing agency, calls billed. And the difference has to be no transports, no treatment needed, et cetera.
That's one of the things we have to provide. We have to provide how many, how many calls we were activated for and how many we transport.
And there is a great difference between the two. But I'll share this thought to you, with you. I'm probably one of the more senior people in this room. I can remember when I was a child, there would be community programs where everybody would gather at a, at a community building and we would have first aid classes. Parents took them, I tagged along as a kid, mama had the book, I'd read it. People knew the basics in first aid. Those kind of classes are not offered anymore anywhere. So the younger generation, they really don't know how to do the basics. So. I'll share this with you. I rode with Manchester for around 10 years simultaneous with riding here Amelia. I got punched out in Chesterfield one night for a hamster bite on the, on the end of an index. Now I'm, I was an ALS provider, so an ALS truck went out responding to a hamster bite.
And that's something else that hurts our volunteers, you know, be up one o'clock in the morning to go to a smoking area. It's like it's a lot of burn in a minute. You know, nine one one calls.
Yes.
That was great.
This would, people would become more privileged. Because we've actually got to point out for a warming call. Woman's bathtub is overflowing and nine one one, we got dispatched, go turn her water off.
Well, so do you have to get dispatched for that? I mean, like we have no ability to turn down things like that?
We, as a volunteer EMS agency, we cannot refuse to respond.
Yep, we get paged for it unless we get canceled before we get there, we gotta go.
We cannot refuse to respond.
Okay, once you get paged for it, so do we have to page for every one of those that come, those kind of silly examples?
Yes, that is, yes.
And that's, that's the reason I wanted y'all here tonight.
If you can't see what's going on for yourself, then you page your mountain jeep, get somebody there that can see what's going on. Because they don't need that liability on them. You don't need it. And the county as a whole doesn't need to be sued either.
I, I don't disagree with that. I just think, I just think saying some of that out loud is really helpful. And you made, Sean made a comment a minute ago about, you know, now he can see both sides. And he was talking about, you know, the information needs to come in. It's interesting, we actually hear more from almost all other county departments than we actually do in my nine months from fire and EMS. And I think part of that is because of their volunteer organizations. So when they don't fall under the direct supervision of the county administrator or one of the other constitutional officers, then we don't have that staff that's like preparing reports for us, showing, you know, and coming and talking. Like, for example, VDOT, which we have no control over, comes and presents to us every single month, different frustrating topic, but you know, the, if you, and I'm not suggesting you should fall under us. I'm just comparing the difference and saying, if you, if you could find ways to more regularly communicate to us what's going on, whether they be sharing just great, I'm sorry, Raina, but I, I don't mean sheriff so much in this one, just so you know, because we get a lot of information from the sheriff, which is good. But that would be a good model to follow actually too. Like if we could even just, you know, if there was monthly, like maybe it's public safety presentation to the board and y'all could rotate through them or something, but yes.
All I was going to say is we have quarterly meetings. And Mr. Scranton is part of those meetings.
Not anymore. He used to come every month.
I think Joseph's talking about the part, like I was talking about, you gotta sell the stuff to the public. I say it all the time, nobody listens to me, you know, but you can say, we've had, what, I think we're up over 2,000 calls this year already, aren't we? I did a report last week. But, um, you know, we've had, we had 600 calls this month for the sheriff's office. I mean, that, that kind of stuff is what blows people away and that's how you get support when you do want to buy something or when you want to put in a, a facility. I feel like part of our job, we gotta be salesmen. We've got to sell stuff to the county. We got to explain why we need it. You know, what, what good would it do? Not just, we need it. I mean, you, you kind of got, you, to me, you want the citizens to want this stuff. You want to say, okay, yeah, the sheriff's office definitely needs another dispatcher. There, there's two people handling 30 calls in a, in a 20 minute window. That's, it's insane. I've seen your sheets, you know, but nobody else sees that. And just me saying it doesn't help because it looks like I'm trying to sell something. But if you say it, you know, as you see it every day. And you know, if, if the squad comes and you say, you know, we, we had X number of calls. I mean, you know, some days we'll run, I've run three wrecks in one day before. I mean, it's, some days it's absolutely crazy, but the average citizen doesn't see any of that at all.
And I don't, I don't think it's about convincing the four board members that are up here. It's about us having information that's shareable to constituents too. So, you know, we're, almost everything we've talked about tonight involves money. Very reasonable. That's what it takes to get most things done. If we advocate for increased spending, that almost always includes tax increases. And I don't think for the types of things that we're talking about, the citizens would say that's not a good use of money. But I think they need to really understand it too. And that's where we can all work together on that. And I assume you're talking, when you talk about monthly, may I assume you mean the emergency, what is it, the emergency management committee meeting?
Emergency services.
Emergency services. So that's not a open to the public advertised meeting. Unless you're the board member that's assigned to the meeting, we don't get minutes from it. We don't get an agenda. So I'm, I'm not saying that's a, that's a, I'm just saying that may be the right avenue. Help us get, help us all get more information from it. Or like we, more, not more than us can, two can attend at a time, but we could rotate through some other people attending as well.
Not only that, but at budget time, for instance, this training facility, I mean, I see it as a line item.
Yeah.
On the CIP, but I don't know what it's all about. Nobody came.
Nobody talked.
We asked all departments to come.
No representatives from fire or EMS come to budget sessions.
You need something, you gotta come ask for it.
We're not blaming, we're trying to, we're trying to look for opportunities.
It's just because you just asked, this is the first offer that you guys ever, if you talk to us.
Well, it's a new day.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, and it's, well, I mean, this is all coming from the fact that like, like Kent started off, in our June meeting, we, we declared fire and EMS one of our top four priorities. So whatever has been or hadn't been said in the past, like we're just starting from there and going, we're, we're invested and how can we all work together on it? So no complaints about past meetings or anything, just, all right, so we'll have a bunch of cycle coming up, you know, in the next six months. Other departments made big presentations to us. Get ready to make a, you know, make one and like share what your priorities are and why. And then those are shareable with the citizens then as well, that helps support the funds.
Just let me know when you need it.
You're in my contact list now, so we're going to, we're going to be doing better about that anyway, that anyway, so it's good.
I have a really quick question and I'll probably regret it.
Will we? You what? She said she might regret the question.
So when we first went to this new ad system that we have, I got with Kent and it fits in, trying to build a report like using this type of information. And I said, I will work on it. So here's my question. Is there something or some type of report that I could possibly build to give you, make different numbers? So I'm getting, I'm, I've been working on my quarterly reports, and those numbers are very, some of the numbers are somewhat generic. You know, how many calls that the sheriff's office run, how many safety support, support. Is there a separate report or different information that you write about people? In any way? I, again, may regret this question.
I hope you don't regret, I hope you never regret asking the question. I'll only speak for myself.
Well, I mean, all of them.
Right, but I, I'm just saying, I don't know what anyone else would need. We get 250 some pages in the board book every month, right? I think we all do our best to read the whole thing. But what stands out are the people that are standing in front of us at the board meeting actually walking you through, walking it through and talking. So in the month of the quarter when we get department reports, there's usually, looks like it's been like an extra 50 pages of department reports. I, I personally do read all those, but how much can you internalize? And I, I'm not saying others don't, I just, but how much can you internalize versus someone standing in front of you and, you know, taking 10 minutes out of the agenda that quarter of the board meeting and saying, let me tell you the five things that really matter. And then there's other detail in that report. It makes a world of difference.
Well, I guess that's my question is what type of information you as board members would be wanting to.
Well, I'll, I'll say for.
I don't know, I don't know enough to know.
I know the reports you're talking about and I think they're great. And I know there was a point in time where you, you were using an old system and a new system and you couldn't tie it all together. But for me, pictures work. I would like to see graphs with trends. Are things going up or things coming down? I don't need the raw numbers. I would rather see what's the impact? Is it going up, going down? And we lose the volunteers? How many? It could all be done in one page of, in business, we call them key performance indicators, KPIs, where it's like five or six or eight or 10, whatever, graphs of measurements that are important to your department. And you can even set goals for each one of those.
See, mine, the, the information I give is more numbers. This is how many calls these people ran, how many calls.
Yeah, but you put them into an Excel spreadsheet and they can make a graph for you. It's very easy. Yeah, that, that I'd have, for one, I'd have to think about it.
I think the, I think part of the challenge is if you're not in it, you don't really know.
Yeah.
So, and I, I hear the question, I'm not, I don't think any of us trying to avoid it. It's just a, when you don't know enough to say what you need, kind of, you know, type thing. But I think, you know, like, Raina, I'd be happy to sit down with you, you know, just come over, come over one day and sit down with you and walk through the report. I bet if we talk about specific pieces, then I'm pretty certain, I'd say like, oh. I bet if we talk about specific pieces, then I'm pretty certain, I'd say like, oh, well, if you did that this way or ask question and you're like, oh, well, I do have that. Let me pull it in. I bet if we sat down and talked it through, it would become clearer than just trying to brainstorm it right now.
And I wouldn't expect the answer right now.
I know, I'm just offering a.
It's like my question, if you said not knowing.
Yeah.
Which don't know, I don't know what you want. You don't know what I know.
You know, back to, so talking about the communications related to this, so we did, Raina and the sheriff did invite each of the board members individually. So we didn't do a group meeting, cause it's not allowed, but individually to sit down with them at budget time. And I think we spent like two hours per person going through. It, you know, it doesn't always have to be that you come and do a big presentation like to a public forum like that. Invite us to something to sit, to sit down and talk. And as the fire chiefs invited last week to come just to an informal talk too. I think we're open to most everything.
Yeah, it's like, it's like when the sheriff wanted to do the salary study and rationalizing pay scales and stuff. We, we each met with him individually to really understand what was involved, rather than just having a agenda item where the sheriff needs this much more money.
Right.
That's easy to say no, cause if you don't get it, we can't explain it to other people. So the more, the more you talk to us, the more individually or at, or at the board meeting for reports, the better.
But the information I gave tonight is hugely, incredibly helpful. We've got a lot to get started on and I think finishing the report then gives us a long-term plan. And now as we go to revisit CIP, I think we've got better information. And then we'll be back to another budget cycle, starting again really soon, actually. So I think you provide a good foundation already.
And I think, I, I like the, um, I, I read the plan and I mean, I, I understand most of it, you know, being on the inside, but. I mean, I, I think the only thing that we'd have to add to it, which you, which you can't really, cause it, it's such a variable would be the cost of phases. And I, I know, I mean, it's, the cost is going, if we go 10 years from now, it's going to cost more than it does now, but.
Trying to capture, tried to capture the cost that, that we could, personnel.
Yeah. Yeah, I got all those, right.
Figures for modifications to buildings and whatnot that might be required.
Right.
But the key is, is gonna be, y'all initially asked for years, one year.
Right, yeah.
We can arbitrarily put a year on there, but it's, it's just a shot. It truly is a shot in the dark. It depends on things that are outside all of our.
I think the phases work. I, I, we said year, but I, I personally think the phases worked fine.
Do you know me too?
Yeah. We did, we just said that, cause that's what people say.
I truly believe we can stay there a lot longer.
Right.
When we implement that stuff now.
Right.
And going, wait.
All right, so between now and kind of working on that next version of the report that we're talking about, October 15-ish, I think if we could target more, more specific ideas, it don't have to be the things to do, but just get some more specifics in there around this recruitment, retention, that kind of ideas. And that gives us more to work with too. And then that's not the final, like even if it's the final report, the whole thing is an ongoing process. Like we talked about, you know, every time we come up for not just budget and CIP, but come talk to us when we're not in the middle of those too. And we keep learning.
I can speak on the administrative assistant, at least the one we have now. The administrative assistant is the right person for the right job. You can take a lot of stress off of the organization as a whole. And they're also a key point to figuring out what you need to know. Kimberly has been awesome since our administrative assistant. Part-time for us.
Should do Congress place.
Huh? Yes.
Yeah.
And, uh, I mean, she's, she's brought stuff to us that we didn't even think about looking at. And she's always consistently looking for something for retention and volunteerism and things that we did. Last year, we developed a plan where we recognized all our squad members for all their years of service and even instrumental in getting the presidential volunteer awards for our, uh, members and stuff like that. So, I mean, so your, the key to your administrative assistant is going to be that person that can come in and, and look outside of the box and work with the organization to improve it.
So she, is she paid directly by Amelia or just funding?
She's on the squad.
Is she the only person and it's payroll? Because yes, if others, you pay the contracting company, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Part-time.
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 So I would imagine there's a lot of overhead then that comes with having to pay one employee too, like you, no?
I process, I process payroll for a living.
Okay.
So I process the payroll.
Is that, is that you add more people? That's when it becomes different costs and more, more overhead and stuff.
No. You can prove 10 paychecks is easier than one. Just takes longer to go through and enter the numbers.
So let me ask a question, is, if she's part-time and, and the fire department needs part-time, could we have one person cover both?
I expected you to have her.
You don't like to share, do you?
She's not sharing.
We're not sharing.
Now I know.
I'm sorry, now what did you?
I heard the fire department was gonna add more. Would you, he said you share a full-time person between the two organizations.
Right, that's.
Two part-time ones.
I don't know if y'all can pay her enough.
I was quite honest, I read the salary in Kent's report and not me. I, I couldn't do it.
She, she.
But what was been budgeted, um, I give the squad. Supposed to be three days a week. Squad member rings to me, two nights ago, I get a call because this girl thinks her dad's time off. She's like, $3,000 a year. Doesn't count for us. I eat, sleep and breathe the rescue squad on top of my other jobs. I, I couldn't do it. I don't disagree that y'all need one person to do both when that time comes. Don't think I'm that person. I think in calling them an administrative assistant, way below what you're gonna require.
So that's the good kind of feedback over the next month to put into the report. Because we're not, we're not close enough. Everything you said resonates, I get that. Love to see that kind of feedback and, and like not just, it's not enough, like give some suggestions on, on ranges in there. Because we don't know until we get the feedback, but I'd love to see that kind of feedback come in there. And titles matter, by the way, too. I get that, I come from that in my job all the time. So suggestions like that are not insignificant either.
You will have to have somebody that understands the system. She was a member years ago, before she got married and had babies. And now she's come back to us. So she had the background of, which she knew how things worked. And you will have to have somebody like that, that knows how things work.
True.
In other words, if I'm hearing you correctly, that we need to come up with a job description.
And better paying than maybe you think.
But, cause what I'm hearing here for what you're calling an administrative assistant, what the fire department's contemplation of what we wanted an administrative assistant to do, sounds like it's two different things.
Spike.
Well, I, I just recently hired somebody doing as administrative assistant to myself and, um, the other girl went out. I started her out there.
What is the basic dollar looking for though?
Well, the basic things we're looking for is that at our board meetings, having a secretary that takes the minutes.
Well, she does that.
Takes, gets the minutes out on time. When you ask about, you have a volunteer secretary, it's kind of hard to force them. We need to get this stuff out here, here and here. Hey, I'm a volunteer, I, suppose I get them out of.
I think he's got a rough, yeah, I think he's got a rough job description in there. I think that'd be good to, to work on too. And if they're different for each group, like we don't have to be the same person. We're just, it's nice if you can give someone a full-time job if, if they want it.
Just a question.
Yeah, my, my last question, I'll be conscious of y'all's time is, um, on the EMS side, I know there's the revenue recovery, um, option. Is there any similar kind of thing on the fire side that's available? I know we're not doing it. Is there anything available like that, you know? Like they're getting essentially from medical, medical insurance. Does homeowner's insurance cover, you know, provide some money back if we were to bill for fire?
I've heard that we can bill insurance companies for calls. I've also heard there's a couple of places where big people pay for coverage in the county that you want me to respond to your house on fire, you gotta pay X number of dollars.
I don't want to go there.
Which doesn't go too well with the citizens when their house is burning and you're sitting there going, oh, I'm sorry, you didn't pay that $20 bucks.
No, definitely not the option I was talking about. The former option you mentioned of, of billing the insurance company is more what I was thinking about.
I've heard that we can look more into it, but I heard that is an option which we've never, normally we do fundraisers as our primary source of extra. Review and right now, probably the biggest one we have is the Ravens Clinic, which is Halloween and 31st. The fairgrounds.
There, there are some options like, um, I think billing for alarms, alarm calls and stuff, but you, you run into PR issues too. I mean.
At least the frequent flyers wouldn't be bad if, uh, okay, if we give you one.
No, the, the business, I, I'd be in favor of billing businesses, yeah. You know, I mean, when you go to the same address for alarm 30 times a year, I mean, it's a bit redundant, but.
There's two in the county that come to mind that are frequent flyers.
I think that's worth exploring.
But I, I don't know the legal processes.
I would, I would recommend a legal review of that particular. It would also increase the administrative, the fire department administratively can't.
Yeah, there's nobody to do it.
I agree, there's a lot to consider with it, but I think, I think exploring would be worth it.
Okay, the dialogue has been good. You know, the, uh, the idea was to find out, to offer our, each of the areas which we've had meetings with. And school system came to us and they presented, uh, their presentation and came with some ideas that, as to how they felt that we might become involved and, and how we might help them pro-con. And we asked them, you know, when they submit that, it's like when you submit your budget. If we've got the opportunities there for you, you know, the, the, when you, when we do the comp plan and when, when those budgets are presented and so forth, the opportunity to, to add some input is there. A lot of people don't, don't, don't take advantage of it, but it's, but it's there. And, um, so we felt that by us coming together, we can, we can have you, 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 you be able to start understanding some resources that are available to, from this end. But then we need to know what you're thinking and what your needs are. And that's, the dialogue is, is good. We, and the idea was to begin that dialogue and hopefully we can continue to, continue to do so.
Yeah, cause let's face it, it's a competitive process.
Very competitive.
You only have so much money to go around, so.
And I don't, I don't know, uh, Ken, the localities where the fire department and the rescue squad function as in single entity, I mean, when I say single entity, administratively.
Volunteer ones or paid ones?
Um, maybe I'm not following. Are you talking about sharing that administrative?
Right.
Person was still being two different entities?
Right.
I, I do not know the answer to that.
I was just curious, I haven't, that issue came up. Okay. Well, we, let's see.
I think we have email suggestion for a short closed session for personnel. Short, it's not, did you say it today?
That can't wait until our regular meeting next week?
I suppose it can.
10 minutes.
Can we do it next week? I have a commitment for acting at 9:00.
I guess so.
Family committed.
Make a win.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, is there anything else beyond that? Is there a need for a continued meeting? All right, then I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
That motion, further discussion on the motion. Not all those people, like, you know, like you sign them out. Food, I have a motion.